So my sister says you better get back. You got your order.
I guess. Well, good morning, everyone. Hearing on Committee of Agriculture entitled Cryptocurrencies: Oversight of New Assets in the Digital Age will come to order. Please join me in a quick prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask you to order for blessings on this meeting this morning. We've got some things to understand that are new and different, and we've got a great panel that's here to visit with us this morning. Also want to lift up Colin Peterson and his family during these times, bittersweet, and your thoughts and prayers with him as well. Help us to do your will and to be the kind of people that will honor you. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen. And just a quick word. Colin Peterson's 98 and a half year old father passed this week, and so are bittersweet, but he was telling me a wonderful story that his dad was apparently had his faculties right up to the very end, which is pretty darned good. So our thoughts are with you, Colin.
He's hanging in there. He could remember the crop prices from 1952, you know. I mean, he knew everything.
Yeah, all right. So, well, good morning. We've got a terrific panel this morning. I see a lot of new faces as in the audience today. One of the big questions upon a lot of folks' minds is what's the Agriculture Committee doing with cryptocurrency and distributed ledger technology? But we're here to find that out this morning. So for those of you that have not joined us before, welcome. We're happy to have you as we discuss an emerging policy area that is of deep interest to our members, to the emerging crypto industry, and we hope to all Americans of all stripes. Digital assets like Bitcoin and Ether, but also hundreds of other token-based projects that are being developed, represent a new way for people to interact and exchange in commerce with one another. While digital assets are often thought of as payment systems or digital gold, I believe the promise that token networks hold is more universal and more exciting, quite frankly, than that. For the first time, we have a tool that enables individuals to reliably exchange value in a digital realm without an intermediary. We can have assets that exist, can be created, exchanged, consumed, in digital form. The promise of being able to secure property rights in a digital space may fundamentally change how people interact with one another. This technology holds the potential to bring enormous benefits to each of us if we're willing to give it the space to grow. Providing a strong, clear, legal regulatory framework for digital assets is essential. To that end, there are several questions before us about how laws should govern the issuance, trade, and utilization of these digital assets. Perhaps no question has generated greater uncertainty than how to determine if a particular token is a security. We generally know that it would have to do if a commonly traded asset is in fact deemed a security, we simply apply the securities laws. If it's not a security, there's a good chance it's a commodity, which would be subject to the requirements of the Commodity Exchange Act. The problem seems to be in making that determination. The Howey Test, which concerns the sale of orange groves and service contracts from the 1940s, is often presented as a standard test to determine if the securities laws govern a token, yet they have proved to be challenging as an analysis under this test. A related question is whether or not current laws are appropriate for these new digital assets. If a token is determined to be a security or a commodity or something else, a regulatory regime need not be static. And if it's necessary, Congress or regulators may want to consider developing a new framework that takes into account the diverse characteristics and unique economic relationships embedded in many of the types of digital assets that can be represented by tokens. Providing clear guidance to enable developers to determine the nature of their token and then suitable rules to enable them to develop their project is essential to both protecting the public and promoting innovation. How we regulate these products and those who develop them won't determine if they're developed or used, but it will determine where they're developed and used, and we want that innovation done in our country. As we consider changes to the laws or new regulations, the Committee on Agriculture will be a part of that conversation. Within the House, we have a vested interest in the definition of a security because it directly impacts the definition of a commodity. Similar to our work in agriculture commodities, as well as futures and swaps markets, the Committee has a strong interest in promoting safe, efficient, transparent markets for those who use these new token markets. Properly regulated markets promote innovation and foster economic growth, and I don't believe that it will be any different with respect to digital assets. Of course, proper regulation does not mean intrusive regulation. It means regulation appropriate to the nature of the activities and the participants, and in some cases, it might mean no regulation at all. Before I turn the ring, remember, I want to thank all of our witnesses for making time to prepare and testify. We've an incredibly qualified panel to present all sides of a fascinating and complex set of issues. I welcome to please each one of you here today for this conversation. And with that, Colin, I'll turn to you for any comments that you might want to have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you for joining us here today. And I'm happy that we have a chance to review this new technology, and our role is to oversee the CFTC regulation of it, if that's appropriate. As a CPA and someone who spent a career helping folks run numbers on their finances, I still am having a hard time getting my hands around this, and I have some real concerns. One trait of cryptocurrency that we need to pay special attention to is its volatility. There are some of you that will tell us that the fluctuations in cryptocurrency are a good thing and part of its appeal, but the increased speculation and the fact that regular investors stand to lose their shirts gives me a great deal of concern. As one study found, over 80% of the initial coin offerings are scams, while regular investors stand to lose a very small amount, stand to gain. For example, 97% of Bitcoin is held by just 4% of the participants in cryptocurrency. There's a lot of things here that don't make much sense to me, and who knows? Maybe some type of this technology will come along and really make a difference after these starts and fits, but as it stands right now, I'm skeptical. It's our jobs to be the adults in the room and to ensure that in these early days, there's enough oversight of this new frontier to ensure that it can grow responsibly. With that, I look forward to your testimony, and I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. So the Chair would request other members submit their opening statements for the record so that our witnesses may begin their testimony and to assure there's ample time for questions. I'd now like to welcome our witnesses to our table. First off, we have Joshua Fairfield, Mr. Joshua Fairfield, the William Donald Bain Family Professor of Law, William and Lee University School of Law in Stanton, Virginia. We have Ms. Amber Balde, co-founder and CEO of Clover in New York, New York. We have Scott Cooper, managing partner of Andreessen Horowitz, Mendlo Park, California. We have Mr. Daniel Gorfine, Director, Lab CFTC, and Chief Innovation Officer at the CFTC here in Washington, DC. We've got welcoming back for another round of conversations the Honorable Gary Ginsler, who currently is a senior lecturer, MIT Sloan School of Management. And then we've got Mr. Lowell Ness, managing partner, Perkins Coie, Palo Alto, California. So we've got a terrific panel, and with that, we'll go to Mr. Fairfield. Each, everybody have five minutes to pitch your wares, and we've also got your full statements for the record. So with that, Mr. Fairfield, you're recognized.
Talk? I'm on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the Committee for the opportunity to address you today. My remarks are going to try to set some context, and they're organized around two questions. We've heard a lot about securities and commodities, but how are people actually using cryptocurrency tokens? And given that, how should regulators proceed? On the first question, blockchain, which is the technology underlying the current rash of cryptocurrency and tokens, is a new decentralized database technology. Many communities have formed just to see what the technology can do, and they're trying different experiments. The potential value in these experiments is considerable. Collaborative communities of artists, new forms of corporations, fast and low-cost check settlement, digitization of securities, open and low-cost electronic mortgage and secured transactions filing systems, secure international remittances, voting systems, and many more are possible applications of the technology. My testimony today will focus on potential for blockchain technology to expand personal property rights online. This is my primary area of research, and my conclusions are, and I'll continue them below, that first, citizens need and want an expansion of personal property rights online, that cryptocurrency tokens are helping them do that by solving important problems in building markets for digital property, and that we need to be cautious when regulating overlapping spaces and use cases, such as systems in which most people hold a token to use it or consume it, and a few hold it to speculate on the price. On the second question, how do we go about conducting oversight? Common sense construction of how groups are using the technology, a so-called duck test, will help regulators begin to sort out whether and where to engage. Rough agency consensus can handle these conflicts, and hearings such as this one are critically important for regulators to start working out the overlaps because many, many more applications of this technology are coming. So in the body of my remarks, I'd like to discuss how this technology represents a badly needed expansion for personal property rights online. We should really care about good property rules for intangible, electronic, digital assets. Good property rules preserve citizen independence. Property institutions build individual wealth and social welfare by reducing transaction costs, and property permits us to express ourselves by changing and arranging our environment to reflect what we want. Here you might think of your own home or your wedding ring, for example. But personal property rights like this have had serious trouble coming online. We just don't own that much personal property online. Consider that people used to have record collections. Now they have a subscription to Spotify. People used to have bookshelves. Now they have Kindle accounts. This is because early in the history of the Internet, intellectual property holders were worried about illegal copying. It took several decades to develop a technology, blockchain, the database technology underneath cryptocurrency tokens, that can be traded, held, bought, and sold, but not duplicated. So far, until now, property institutions haven't really gotten the benefit of Internet technologies because it's too costly to record all the transactions. We can't have a database of ownership for every Barbie doll in the entire country, right? It's too costly. However, token systems can and will reshape all of these ways of owning if they push price points low enough the way the Internet did for basic Internet communication. In sum, blockchain technology is not just used as a security, is not just used as a commodity, it's used as a way to unstick personal property law for all of us online, but it's only going to do it if we let it. So what's the path to successful oversight? Responsible regulation has to rest on a frank and common sense determination of how people are using this technology. Working out the jurisdictional questions is going to be time consuming, but it's not particularly harder than for network communications technology generally, we've just had to hand these things out and figure it out. Tokens do present some challenge. Specifically, they may be used in different ways by different members of a community. They may be used at different times in different ways, but most importantly, the nature of the use by a community can shift. A community can be trying to do something entirely legitimate and have speculators come in and begin to disrupt the purpose of the original community. The current hot characterization debate is whether token sales ought to be deemed regulable under the Howey Test. I believe instead, the Howey Test represents the outer bound of where we should look. We should look inside that outer bound to figure out what the beneficial and damaging uses of the technology are. If a community is using cryptocurrency tokens like securities, then they should be regulated as securities, but if they're not, they shouldn't, and that's the most important addition. In conclusion, blockchain technology has enabled new communities and new business forms. It has also provided the technological basis for a badly needed expansion of personal property rights online, and for purposes of regulatory jurisdiction, a rough, common sense sorting into buckets will do more good in the near term than precise definitions of what a cryptocurrency token is. That is a lost cause. A cryptocurrency token wears as many hats as humans give it. It is an entry in a database. It is a technological entry and nothing more. In the current characterization debate, what this means is that a token should be deemed a security when it operates like a security, a commodity when it operates like a commodity, a currency when it operates as a currency, and as a simple property interest when it operates as a simple property interest. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fairfield. Ms. Balde, five minutes.
Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the Committee, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I'm Amber Balde, co-founder and CEO of Clover, a company building tools that make it easier to build decentralized applications on top of both publicly accessible blockchain networks and access-controlled distributed ledgers. Previously, I led the blockchain program at JP Morgan, though I'd like to note that my comments today do not represent my former employer. I also currently sit on the board of the Zcash Foundation, a nonprofit organization seeking to advance the state of the art for privacy technology as applied to Internet infrastructure and privacy-preserving cryptocurrencies. These are a variety of disparate hats, all of which lead me to the same message. My commentary today concerns the importance of a cautious and thoughtful regulatory approach to innovative technologies, even and especially those that might disrupt business as usual or add to the complexity of regulating the Internet as both critical infrastructure and a shared public good. We must determine how to balance the enormous potential value of this technology with the need for consumer protections and national security, and how to achieve this while respecting human and constitutionally protected rights. So far, money seems to be the killer app for blockchain. Much as the early Internet's killer app, email, continues to be a cornerstone for how we communicate online, peer-to-peer payments will likely grow into and persist as a ubiquitous part of our personal and professional daily lives. In fact, the ability to spend, trade, rent, or license other sorts of unique digital bearer assets could be applicable to many things we own: mortgages, securities, collectibles, intellectual property rights, personal data, et cetera. Imagining this mature, interconnected, global ecosystem of such markets feels like standing in the 90s and imagining Netflix streaming on your phone. And yet, my concern is not the speed with which we reach that end state, it's the choices that we make along the way, which stand to be as hotly contested and impactful as net neutrality, the DMCA, FOSTA/CESTA, or the on-again, off-again discussion of state-mandated weak cryptography continues to be. While we struggle to overlay existing regulatory frameworks onto new technology that is useful precisely for its fluidity, other areas of the world are embracing that ambiguity and learning by doing. In Afghanistan, for example, Code to Inspire helps train young women for technical careers and pays them in Bitcoin, which they can use in local shops as well as global marketplaces. In a place where women's banking and even physical agency is limited, financial autonomy and digital inclusion is a powerful force for equality and democracy. In some African countries and places with less legacy financial infrastructure, companies are using crypto assets to enable farmers to properly track and register their commodities and increase their bargaining power in downstream market pricing. Not only can end consumers tip their farmer in support of fair and sustainable working conditions, but every other factory or wholesale retailer along the way can make more informed decisions about the provenance of inputs to their products. In the United States, Square, whose business strategy is already based on disrupting traditional payments processors, has added the ability to buy, sell, and transfer Bitcoin into its mobile app, and there are many products targeting cryptocurrency investors and early adopters. There's also several more experimental projects that are interesting, for example, using economic incentives to battle fake news, cryptocurrency micropayments as an alternative business model to data-hungry online advertising, and fluid marketplaces for unused disk space on your home computer as a disruptive force to centralized cloud storage. These projects, all launched as initial coin offerings, ICOs, either on a new single-purpose blockchain network or as a token on top of an existing network like Ethereum, are often compared to the Internet startup boom of the 90s. The ability to quote-unquote "code oneself out of business" is a novel property of these decentralized blockchain applications, but most experiments today invoke a variety of human-controlled workflow checkpoints and escape hatches to allow intervention if necessary, along with understanding who controls access to the network and who can modify the rules of the system. Identifying who controls these escape hatches might be helpful in sorting tokens into various asset classes once a sensible taxonomy has been established. As a counterpoint, blockchain is not the answer to every problem. For example, I recommend extreme caution with exploration of blockchain-based e-voting. Ensuring one person, one vote while keeping ballot selections private is an incredibly complex computer science and human coordination problem that we are not ready to tackle yet. Internationally, it's no surprise that some of the central banks most aggressively investigating cryptocurrency as an alternative or enhancement to their existing currencies are in Venezuela, Russia, and China. Going forward, as there is inevitably more discussion of the potential for a digital dollar, I encourage strongly encrypted, privacy-preserving design choices coupled with opt-in selective disclosure, as opposed to options like mandatory cryptographic backdoors or golden keys, which could make the U.S. financial system a very attractive target for nation-state-sponsored cyber attacks and hackers. As that conversation matures, we must clarify how FinCEN, OFAC, and other relevant rules can be applied, modified, or interpreted to balance many competing interests. So in conclusion, and hopefully, even and hopefully if this committee's guidance is simply a strong commitment to non-interventionism, safe harbors for innovators, and work towards resolution of the patchwork fabric of state laws, the time it takes to come to such a commitment may have the unfortunate effect of eroding America's early mover advantage in technical innovation and entrepreneurialism. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balde. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, for the opportunity to be here today to talk about this very important new technology. My name is Scott Cooper. I'm the managing partner for a firm called AH Capital Management, which manages about $7 billion worth of venture capital assets, and very recently also for a group called CNK Capital Management, which is a $300 million registered investment advisor fund focused exclusively on investing in crypto-related assets. I'd like to spend my time today to focus on why we believe as investors that crypto technologies make a very compelling investment opportunity, particularly for members of the venture capital community. And I want to start with a definition that's different from the definition, I think, that we often hear about. So if you focus on a lot of the public narrative today around crypto technologies, there are two kind of dominating narratives. One is certainly around Bitcoin and price fluctuations and volatilities, which we heard certainly from the Ranking Member today as well, as well as what are called initial coin offerings, ICOs, for capital fundraising. As investors, though, we're interested in the broader ecosystem, and we use the term crypto networks to describe what we think about as that ecosystem. Very specifically, crypto networks for us means a new way to build digital services, and by digital services, we mean any Internet application that obviously may exist today, so ride-sharing applications, social media applications, and probably a whole host of things, of course, that we haven't even thought about, but where those digital services are owned and operated by a community of network participants rather than by a centralized corporation. Now, I realize at first blush that when you think about community ownership and management of an asset, that may seem odd, but in fact, if you look at the technology industry, there's actually significant precedent for the existence and the success of community-based networks in the development of a significant portion of technology. First is what is known as the open source software movement. This started back in 1983, actually, at MIT by a professor named Richard Stallman, and at the time, it was a very, very radical notion. The idea was that a community of developers would publish and then freely offer their software to others who could modify that software, who could incorporate it into various other projects. It was really, in many respects, a very liberal movement around opening up and reducing kind of copyright initiatives in software. If you fast forward to today, though, open source is the predominant method of software development and software utilization today in the world. For any data center you go to, which is obviously where major corporations run their Internet applications, Linux, which is a major operating system, is by far the dominant operating system in play, and for all of you who, like myself, who walk around with your cellphones all day long, the vast majority of components in your cellphones are what are called Android and essentially open source software. So the history of open source software, I think, is relevant for how we think about the potential for what Bitcoin and crypto networks can be. The second important historical analogy is around what we call open protocols, which really formed the foundation of the modern Internet that we all use today. An example of this is something called SMTP, which is the protocol that we all use for email transmission. It's an open protocol. It was governed in many cases by open communities, by networks, by academics, and in many cases with government funding, and many people built applications on top of these open networks precisely because they knew that the nature of that protocol would not change. They could rely on the steadiness and the consistency of that protocol on which to build applications. So if we look at technology, open protocols that are well-developed and well-maintained can become the building blocks on which massive customer utility and economic growth can be built. It's also the case, however, if you look at the startup world, that many startup companies have failed by relying on what we call platform risk, which is building on other platforms that are governed by centralized corporations and then finding that the rules of the road change over time, and that really does significantly handicap their efforts. As a result of this, what we now see in our business is many developers are hesitant to take on this platform risk and are instead looking at things like crypto networks as a new and innovative way for developers to create new digital services without the intended risk that comes from depending upon centralized platforms. In many ways, crypto networks borrow from the nearly 50 years of history in the technology industry, which shows that communities of developers can share their work openly and properly govern a network without centralized authority. But crypto networks also introduce a very powerful economic incentive that didn't exist in these prior generations, the presence of what we call a token, which creates a direct financial incentives for members of the communities to in fact develop and govern the networks appropriately. The token really, in a sense, is the glue that binds the various players in the ecosystem and provides the appropriate economic incentives for all market participants. Understandably so, this creates a whole new set of challenges for regulators. Consistent with recent statements that we've heard from the Director of Corporate Finance at the SEC, we believe that the regulatory nature of crypto networks varies with the stage of development of a particular project. Briefly, when a centralized sponsor is seeking to raise capital from investors prior to the functional development of the network, this is probably what is known as an investment contract and therefore properly regulated as a security. However, the nature of the tokens that are delivered on that contract can ultimately be regulated as commodities once the fulfillment of that investment contract has occurred. As stated by the CFTC, some tokens are not securities once the network is functional, and in particular in cases where the network is decentralized from an ownership perspective, we believe the nature of the tokens looks more like commodities and securities and therefore probably rightly should be governed by the CFTC. This is precisely because there is no centralized sponsor on which the efforts of the value of the token are largely dependent. Instead, the tokens have value based upon the utility of the service to participants. This actually looks much more like the way commodities trade. In conclusion, the U.S. has long enjoyed the fruits of innovation in the form of economic growth, job growth, and consumer utility stemming from many of the great technology companies of our time, and we believe that crypto networks present a new and exciting opportunity for us to continue on that trajectory. Doing so, however, will require that we develop a regulatory framework that encourages risk-taking and capital formation, provides clarity and certainty to market participants, and of course protects individual investors and the integrity of the markets. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Gorfine, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the Committee for the opportunity to testify before you today. I am Chief Innovation Officer and Director of Lab CFTC at the U.S. Commodity Futures Trading Commission. The testimony presented here reflects my own views and does not necessarily reflect the opinions or the views of the Chairman or the Commission. In May of last year, Chairman Giancarlo announced with bipartisan commission support the launch of Lab CFTC, the agency's effort to help create a model for regulatory engagement and modernization in light of the ongoing digitization of our markets. Its mission is to facilitate market-enhancing innovation, inform policy, and ensure that we have the technological and regulatory tools and understanding to keep pace with inevitable change. The building blocks of our effort are engagement, testing and experimentation, and education. Shifting to the primary topic of today's hearing, we are interested both in private or permissioned distributed ledger technologies that can improve market infrastructure and in public blockchains that require the use of a virtual currency. Developments across this spectrum have society rethinking the nature of money, how people transact, and how we can more efficiently engage in regulatory, economic, and market activity. With respect to public blockchains, proponents note that they unlock digital scarcity, enable efficient transfer of ownership, empower the execution of applications, and all of this can be done without the need for a trusted central intermediary that was traditionally needed to verify that each party has and does what it promises. Many, however, appropriately worry that virtual currencies and tokens may be used for illegal activities and are prone to fraud, manias, and bubbles driven by potential misunderstandings and myths regarding their scalability, utility, and intrinsic value. With recent hype around this space, there has also been a proliferation of ICOs, which may be intended to raise capital for a venture and may bear the hallmarks of a securities offering. Our colleagues at the SEC have been thoughtfully addressing related challenges and providing additional clarity to the marketplace. And from the CFTC's perspective, given the potential to tokenize a broad range of economic assets, it is important to remind the public that digital assets can also be commodities or derivatives, depending on their terms and how they are structured. Given the potential and the challenges of this space, Chairman Giancarlo has made clear that the proper response by regulators is not to dismiss the entire movement as misguided or foolish, but rather to take the time to learn, facilitate the promise, and guard the promise. against risks and bad actors. As part of this effort, Lab CFTC published its first fintech primer on the topic of virtual currencies in October 2017. The primer explains that the agency determined in 2015 that certain virtual currencies such as Bitcoin are commodities and therefore implicate our jurisdiction. The CFTC has regulatory oversight authority over futures and swaps markets based on commodities, and then has anti-fraud and manipulation enforcement authority over these and the underlying commodity markets. It is important to note, however, that we do not have oversight authority over these underlying markets. Additional details regarding CFTC oversight of crypto-related markets and enforcement and education efforts since the self-certification of Bitcoin futures in December 2017 can be found in my written testimony. Moving forward, one thing is certain: none of us are able to predict exactly where this innovation is heading. It is accordingly incumbent upon us, as a 21st-century regulator, to continue studying, learning, and keeping pace with change. We look forward to ongoing close collaboration with our regulatory peers, including through the FSOC Digital Asset Working Group. We all have the shared goal to educate market participants, target bad actors, and ensure an efficient and effective regulatory framework. We are also focused on bringing clarity and certainty to the market, but need to be sure that we are thoughtful in our approach and do not steer or impede the development of this area of innovation. While some may seek the immediate establishment of bright lines, the reality is that hasty regulatory pronouncements are likely to miss the mark, have unintended consequences, or fail to capture important nuance regarding the structure of new products. In the late 1990s, during the early days of the internet, Senior Government Policy Advisor Ira Magaziner made the following observation: "That given, quote, 'the breakneck speed of change in technology,' government attempts to regulate are likely to be outmoded by the time they are finally enacted,' end quote. Given this dynamic, the government largely avoided a prescriptive approach in favor of principles focused on educating and empowering law enforcement and allowed this area of innovation time and space to develop, all while maintaining the ability and careful vigilance to act to ensure market integrity. This approach generally seems like the right one when dealing with new technologies, which are largely agnostic as to how they are used. The role of the regulator is to facilitate use of new technologies that can benefit markets and the public more broadly while deterring and pursuing those who seek to use technology to do harm." Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gorfine. Mr. Gensler, five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson. My condolences on your dad's passing. It's good to be with you all here today. I think I've testified in front of you a dozen or two dozen times in some previous capacities. But since I was last with you, I took on a new role at MIT where I am engaged, yes, in researching, teaching, lecturing, and advising on digital currency and blockchain technology. Now, I say that, but for those who don't know, because some are new, I also chaired the Commodity Futures Trading Commission for four or five years. And before that, long ago, I was 18 years at Goldman Sachs. So I bring from my years in finance, my years in public policy, and now, I guess, as an academic, some perspective of what I've learned. And with the chair's permission, one thing I've learned as an academic is to ask the audience a little bit about their engagement in Bitcoin. So again, with the chair's permission, if I could just ask, how many members of this committee have invested in cryptocurrencies? And I'm going to ask the audience, too. So we've got--
Show hands.
--one in the audience.
All right, Bob. Show hands. Several in the audience?
Yeah, we've got about half the audience. That's an interesting split. There we go. I would say the other thing that splits the community in my discussions usually is, this is not a community that splits normally like right and left, Republican, Democrat. This is a community that splits more about Bitcoin maximalist and Bitcoin pessimist, or skeptics on one hand. And by the way, some of those skeptics and pessimists are Republican and some are Democrats. Some are Nobel laureates, some are in finance, whether it's Jamie Dimon or Warren Buffett, and then some of the maximalists can be a venture capitalist like an Andreessen Horowitz and elsewhere. So it's interesting, the split in the community. I'm probably a little bit center-maximalist, if I can say that. I am an optimist on the underlying technology. You'll also hear some people say, "Well, not that Bitcoin, but the blockchain technology's good," and they kind of split their views that way. So again, what have I learned? Blockchain technology, I believe, has a real potential to transform the world of finance because it is about money, it's about moving value on the internet. This new technology could lower costs and risk in the financial sector. Second, to reach its potential, I feel strongly that, and for public confidence, to reach its potential, we need to bring it inside the world that we know, the long-held public policy frameworks. Now, what are those frameworks? Congress has a role to play to tinker about these frameworks, but I'm just saying, what are our historical frameworks about technology and finance? We guard against illicit activity like tax evasion or money laundering. We ensure for financial stability, and we protect investors and consumers. Those are the three big ones: we protect against illicit activity, we ensure for financial stability, and we protect investors. Everything else is debatable, and we need to adjust the details underneath that. Third, the SEC and CFTC do have a role to play. Both of them have roles to play, and they've released numerous notices and enforcement actions and so forth. However, there's a lot of noncompliance. I mean, there are thousands of entrepreneurs out there that probably, right now, are not complying with SEC guidance. And there are fewer that are not complying with CFTC guidance, but that's just because the CFTC doesn't ever recite of this thing called the initial coin offering market, and that's where there's a lot going on. And this thing's going large and big. It's about a $250 billion market. Quarter of a trillion is getting some size. I mean, the overall capital markets in the world are about 250 trillion or 300 trillion, so it's not threatening that. But thousands of ICOs have been raised, $20 billion of capital formation. I'm here to say nearly all of them, I don't know if it's 98% or 97%, but nearly all of them are probably securities under our securities laws because they're being offered in a pre-functional time. This ICO market's rife with scams and frauds. Fourth, bad actors have figured out how to use this new currency. Sometimes it's state actors. We learned last Friday it was the alleged, I should say, but the alleged 12 Russians' spies. Venezuela tries to raise it off of their oil and outrun U.S. sanctions policy. Fifth, while federal agencies are engaged, current laws apply to this activity, there are gaps. So if I can mention a few of the gaps. First, I think that there's gaps around the crypto exchanges themselves, either where you can buy and sell. Why? Because they're being, right now, regulated through state money transmission laws. This approach, regulating them like Western Union or MoneyGram, is just not satisfactory because crypto activity is more complex and it's harder to trace, and it doesn't build on top of the traditional banking system. It's built on something that we can't see that's out there in other countries, like in China and Russia. So second, the crypto exchanges lack brokered access. They don't have brokers. So there's no brokers, by the way, sending 1099Bs, and my detailed testimony says, you know, maybe the IRS should do something about that so you can just have reporting of the gains. Third, the issuers of securities in the crypto space are only slowly coming into the SEC remit. I think this is going to take two, three, four years before the SEC really cleans up the space. And so there's going to be a lot of call, can they go faster? Can we do it right? But it's going to take some time. Fourth, crypto derivatives are being handled by the CFTC. I think they're doing it well, but there's two things that worry me about the technology. And one is that the unregulated underlying crypto cash market is a mess. So the corn and wheat markets that you ever see, the gold and the oil markets, we have a lot of history. We have some confidence about that. And then the CFTC can do their job layering over those underlying commodities. The CFTC is regulating derivatives, but they're referencing an underlying market where it's just, at best, the Wild West, and at worst, it's pretty bad. So about that underlying market, the CFTC has general anti-fraud and anti-manipulation authorities with regard to it, but I think that Congress will be debating it. Probably not in this Congress, but I suspect in the next session, the next Congress, you all will be debating, should you give the CFTC additional authority, or maybe some other agency? You know, maybe it would be the SEC, somebody else. But I think the CFTC, to have additional authorities about that underlying, what I would call, cash crypto market, it's 70% of the market. The SEC has securities, the CFTC had derivatives. I think you'll want to debate whether to do something about the underlying market. And lastly, I think you'll need to give them resources, along with your friends over at the Appropriations Committee, because I think these agencies will need that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gensler. Mr. Ness, five minutes.
Thank you all for inviting me to testify this morning. I certainly agree with everybody that's gone before me that this technology does have the potential to be transformative. One of the questions I get asked a lot is, why don't we just call these things securities? We have securities regulations. We could create a scenario where these things get registered and then become, quote-unquote, freely tradable. So why not just call them securities, deal with existing laws? And I think the problem with that is they exhibit some characteristics of securities during certain phases and not in others, and especially when we get to full functionality, when it's a truly completed product that is being sold. The intention of that product is to be used in a network, and that really can't happen, at least not at the speed of software, which is really the fundamental principle here behind these decentralized protocols, is to allow for value transfers truly at the speed of software. You can't do that if everybody's got to be a broker-dealer and all the intermediaries have to interact in a way that would be appropriate for securities. So we need to come up with a fairly novel and pragmatic approach to dealing with the fact that there needs to be some investor protections, particularly in the early stages, while the thing is a PowerPoint deck and an idea in somebody's mind. But find ways to create some clarity around how and when it goes from being sold as a security to being sold as a commodity. And that is a very important imperative right now because we are seeing so much activity, frankly, and the threat of sort of people going offshore for lack of clarity is a very real one. I will say, in my 25 years in Silicon Valley, I have not seen circumstances where you go to a meetup in places like Palo Alto or even San Jose, and you see regulators from Zug, Switzerland, and Singapore, and Hong Kong, and Bermuda, and, and, and. And so to avoid any kind of race to the bottom, I do think that there's a serious imperative about getting something done before we have a situation where we're trying to entice people back into the country, because then the standards would really have to be lowered to do that. So I think we have an opportunity now, if we get ahead of the true flight, but that's an important idea around why we need some of the bright lines. To that end, I did, in some of my written testimony, include some materials and a proposed regulatory framework that both talk about what the existing laws say and how the existing laws treat these so-called utility tokens. And, you know, there's sort of a 50-page memo on how the existing laws work. To avoid having to go through that 50-page memo-type analysis with each and every one of these, I think the bright lines are really what's necessary. So there's a regulatory framework that we've been thinking a lot about, too, that would create that set of bright lines that would enable the regulators and the companies going out there to really know how to sort the good ones from the bad ones. And I do think that starts with kind of this test around how we, in the investment contract analysis, for, you know, regulating securities as securities in the primary offering, if they're being sold sort of pre-functional, before they're fully functional. But coming up with ways to say that, once they are fully functional, how do we let them now trade as commodities effectively? And the trading is important because, as I said, this is the movement of value. To have value, it needs a price, and the markets really are a necessary part of this. So the fact that there are secondary markets is a key part of this. They need to be able to trade in those markets to establish price. They also need to be able to be used in their networks as non-securities. And so we need to come up with ways to say, when they're being sold to investors as investments, let's treat them like securities. When they're being used in the network or they're being traded in the secondary markets, let's call them commodities. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ness. The chair will remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in the order seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in the order of arrival. I appreciate my colleagues' understanding, and I'll recognize myself for five minutes. Ms. Ness, I agree with you that if we don't get this right, and we flush the innovators offshore and other countries, that getting them back is a lot more difficult. So hopefully, at least this start of the process with this hearing, that we can get to an answer that doesn't do that. Ms. Balde and Mr. Cooper, you each noted that tokens and crypto networks had the potential to create next-generation open internet protocols. Can you flush that out a little bit for the layman and myself that understand the words, but if you could tell us what those actually mean, it'd be a little helpful.
Sure. Thank you. So when we say "open," open means a couple things. In this case, we mostly mean open access when we say public blockchains, which means that anyone can join the network. It has to do with the degree of gatekeeping, which is not necessarily an all-or-nothing kind of a decision. But if we start thinking of public blockchains as being more like a public commons, it's a lot more like the internet, wherein you have a lot of choice as how you access that sort of network. We also usually mean open source, as Mr. Cooper mentioned, so that we're allowing auditing of that code, which increases trust of the code, and most of the core technology that powers the backbone of the internet is open source.
I agree with all that. I would just, just to give you maybe a very specific example, imagine in the future, you know, a social network. Today, right, you have, as users of social networks, of course, you have an intermediary, in many cases, a company like a Facebook, who obviously is taking and utilizing the consumer data, and then obviously developing relations with advertisers and others as a way to monetize that data. That's their business model. In the future, utilizing a crypto network, you can imagine a world where you, as the user, own your data, that data is cryptographically secured, and you choose which data you want to expose to various advertisers or other promoters, and the flow of economic value in that case, as opposed to going through an intermediary, might be going directly from an advertiser or a promoter of products to you as an individual, as you've kind of governed the use of that data. So that would be kind of, in very broad terms, the way to think about, kind of expansive view of what this could look like.
All right. Mr. Fairfield, you talked about the Howey test, which seems to be the gold standard among securities lawyers who can spell that last name. Can you, you talked about that being maybe the outer edges? Since one of our questions we're trying to answer is, are these securities or the commodities, and where does that transition occur? And is it, you know, where? Could you talk to us better about this Howey test, and why do you think that's the outer edge, and just how it should apply to distinguishing between commodities and securities?
Certainly. There are two questions. The first is lawyers are inventive. They can rework the formal form of a transaction to make it into anything. Howey describes the outer limit of the kinds of legal forms that can be turned into investment contracts, that can be turned into this sort of exchange, "I give you money now, and I wait, and I reap the benefit of your labor," on the other end. But the difficulty with that is that while courts must be able to look to the economic realities of the transaction, look underneath the form, because if we just look at the form, if we just look at what it's called, then anyone can just title it, can title the asset whatever they want at the top of a piece of paper and escape whatever regulation they want. So courts have to look past the formal titling of the asset to the economic realities of it. However, they also have to understand that the very flexibility of these tools, both the flexibility of legal forms and the flexibility of this database technology, means that it is very possible for people to be using a product for one entirely legitimate purpose and have other people begin to use it for different purposes. An example of this from outside of the cryptocurrency area entirely would be the discussion we had several decades ago on VCRs, right? The question was, some people use them to make illegal copies, many people don't. How far are we willing to go in rooting out bad uses that are beginning to cut away healthy tissue? And that's why I believe Howey is the outer circle. And that's why I believe Howey is the outer circle. It's necessary that it be there so that SEC, in this particular case, can reach cases in which people are labeling something one formal legal form but are actually engaging in an investment contract. That's what it's there for. But it doesn't really tell us anything about what the regulatory landscape should actually look like at the end of the day. In fact, the regulatory landscape, in my estimation, should and will look like something substantially different. It will look like a bit of a handoff, like a relay race, in which for certain functions and under certain conditions, one overseer may have authority under a...
Sorry, I lost your mic. Thank you, Mr. Fairfield. Ranking Member, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know where to start. You know, I'm somebody that believes we should still be on the gold standard, and that I think we should audit the Fed because I don't really trust them, you know? So what worries me about this is that, you know, you say there's $250 billion of capitalization here or whatever. How much money is actually here? I mean, I just, this is just, seems like a Ponzi scheme to me. It's, you know, I mean, I think the stock market is a casino, you know? So that's where I'm coming from. So I mean, so if I, you know, I'm going to send $100,000 to somebody through one of these deals, who's going to stand behind it? You know, where's the, you know, so I give the money, I guess, to one of you guys, and then you turn around, create these things, and send it to somebody else. Well, what, in the meantime, what if you went broke? I mean, I was involved when we found out about credit default swaps and figured out that everybody was trading these things and there was nothing there, and if we hadn't have stepped in, the whole economy would have collapsed, you know? And I don't know if we got a similar situation going on here with this, but, you know, I just, what is behind this? I mean, what, if there's no money at the end of the day, who's going to make up for this? Can anybody explain that to me, Mr. Gensler?
Could I, could I take a shot? I think that I'd split it in two buckets. In this field where venture capitalists, entrepreneurs are developing an idea and asking people for money, they publish a white paper, they build a following, Reddit posts, and these are different communities, social network posts, Medium and so forth, and they build a following and then they sell it and raise money. And sometimes it's small, just like a crowdfunding on Kickstarter. But most of them aren't. There's been 3,800 of them to date. Over 50% of them fail within four months. And there's different estimates, how many are scams and frauds. There are good-faith actors in the middle of it, too, a lot of good-faith actors, but there's a lot of fraud and scams. If, right now, if they fail, you've, only way you could do is try, under the securities laws, to say they were an unregistered, non-compliant security and try to, under the private rights of actions under securities law, try to get something back. Nothing. In the second category, it's digital gold, the digital gold, which is Bitcoin. And while there's nothing behind it, I would say, Mr. Ranking Member, there's really nothing behind gold either, you might, all of us. We have, what's behind it is a cultural norm that for thousands of years, we liked gold. The value of gold, the worldwide value of gold is $7 trillion, by the way, just to give you a little sense of it. But only about 10% of the annual production of gold is used in manufacturing. The rest of it is because we think it's kind of nice to have gold necklaces and jewelry, or we do it as a store of value. So Bitcoin is a modern form of digital gold, and it's a social construct.
But the money, they're just creating this money out of nowhere. I mean...
In the first category, the investor type that would be under the SEC...
Well, I get that, but...
But in the second category, you're right, which was under this committee, I mean, you're going to be grappling with this for a while, I think, is digital gold.
I mean, in the first category, I mean, I assume most of the people are sophisticated enough to realize they're going to get fleeced, potentially, you know? I mean, are they, or?
I couldn't...
I mean, I think there's people get into that area that don't realize what they're getting into. They think somehow or another, they're going to get rich, and they're going to, you know, get into this deal ahead of everything else, and it's going to go up, and they're going to make 10,000% on their money and whatever else, and some guy is selling them, you know, on this. I mean, I don't know where the protection is here for people.
There's, some are very sophisticated, like Andreessen Horowitz, and they manage $7 billion. There are many like that, but there are others that aren't. But you're right. I think the Securities and Exchange Commission has a lot of work ahead of them to sort of bring this market into, the first part of the market. 70% of the market is commodities, but the first part, this ICO marketplace, is, I think the SEC's, they're working at it, but they've got a lot of work ahead.
If I could, if I could just add, Mr. Ranking Member, you know, you raised this concept of kind of almost trust, right? Which is, who do I trust? What's the trusted intermediary? The beauty, at least certainly from the perspective of an investor and as a consumer, the beauty of these crypto networks is, what you're trusting is, you're trusting kind of cryptography, you're trusting math, you're trusting software, as opposed to a centralized intermediary. And you have a community that's governing the interests there. So in other words, if the community tries to do something that is inappropriate, all of this software is open source, all of this software can be basically what's called forked and literally taken over and, you know, recreated in a new community. So there is a norm of community governance that exists in these areas that really substitutes trust from a centralized intermediary to trust to a community that's responsible for government.
All right, thank you, but I'm still skeptical.
Mr. Lucas, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And along with the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, I have the privilege of sitting both on this committee and Financial Services. So I welcome this discussion by the panel when it comes to the next regulatory frontier as it impacts the two committees. First, Mr. Cooper, how should regulators think about the function of the token when choosing to apply regulatory requirements? Should regulators look to the functioning of the token at all, or only the issuing activity? And for example, say there's a cryptocurrency, we'll call it for the sake of discussion, Bitcoin 2.0. And say it functions identically to Bitcoin in every way except that a small portion of the total tokens were pre-mined and distributed in a token sale. Is it possible to issue Bitcoin 2.0 through an ICO and not have it be a security? Or is the functioning of the token irrelevant because of the manner in which it's issued? So I'm asking what my folks back home would define as geek questions, but this is where we are.
Yes, sir.
What say you?
So, yes, a couple, a couple things. So the issuance of those tokens and the sale of those tokens in exchange for money before a network exists, I do believe, is a, what's called an investment contract, and should be regulated as such. So if I develop a white paper and I tell you I'm going to build this thing, and you give me money for it before it exists, if I fleece you, absolutely, the SEC has jurisdiction to, you know, ring me up on securities fraud charges, you have private cause of action, no question about there. Once the network is functional, and therefore the tokens are doing what they were intended to do, whether that's storage or other things, the value of that token now really is not a function of the efforts of the developer, it's really the question of what's the utility of that token, much like any other commodity. And so therefore, you know, certainly my view is that, in that case, the underlying token itself should be regulated as if it were a commodity, because that's actually kind of the nature of what it's actually doing.
Thank you. Mr. Ness, the last prong of the Howey test identifies as an investment contract or transaction in which an individual expects profits solely from the efforts of the promoter or the third party. Yet for almost every token project, there are multiple avenues for a holder to come into possession of a token. When a network's fully functional, a token can be purchased through a promoter, traded on a secondary market exchange within a network, or earned by performing work to support the network. In each of these cases, the efforts of the holder vary and can implicate the Howey test differently. How should regulators think of an asset that has multiple methods of delivery, an asset that can be both purchased and earned? Or should the method of delivery determine the regulatory regime governing an asset?
Fortunately, I think it's a relatively simple answer, which is that it really comes down to the same test, which is pre-functionality versus post-functionality, or whatever we end up deciding is the trigger point for determining the different status. It seems to me that however you come by this, I mean, I suppose there are two fundamentally different ways. One is to get it from the issuer directly, the other is to get it from some third party. And if it is in pre-functional, the pre-functional stage, and you are getting it, obtaining it from the issuer, I would argue that is a primary offering of an investment contract, even if it's essentially earned on a network, because at that point, there's a lot of caseload out there that, you know, if you do work for a security, you know, you've paid for the security. There's consideration there in the services. So I wouldn't say that there's a difference between earning it versus buying it. It's going to be a security depending on its characteristics as, you know, as we end up defining them, pre-functionality versus post-functionality.
Mr. Gorfine, in your testimony, you mentioned the new working group set up by FSOC and the commission's work with the SEC and other regulators. This committee cares a lot about coordination between financial regulators when it comes to these sorts of matters. So can you talk more about how the regulators, including the CFTC, and working together, are working together, I should say, to understand and clarify their overlapping jurisdictions and how it affects the virtual currencies?
Yes, thank you. It's a great question, and we agree that coordination and collaboration with our sister agencies is very important on this type of a topic. You know, one thing about this space that's common across a lot of areas of financial technology is that it inherently cuts across geographic and jurisdictional boundaries. So it's very important to make sure that we are coordinated and sharing information with each other. So certainly on the topic of cryptocurrencies, we are working closely with the SEC to make sure that we are coordinated. And just to step back and explain how we view our rule set, the definition of commodity under our statute is very broad. So a lot of things are commodities, and we're soon after the World Cup, so think about soccer balls. Those are commodities. Just because something is necessarily a commodity doesn't mean that we have a direct regulatory interest. It's only when we start to see the rise of futures or swaps products built on those commodities that we have kind of direct oversight. But when the SEC applies the Howey test and determines whether something fits within a securities law framework, that certainly matters to us, because then that's something that would fall under their jurisdiction, hence the need for us to be in close communication with the SEC.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd indulge me for one last thought. For a number of years, I sat next to Ron Paul on the Financial Services Committee. So when Mr. Peterson brought up his observations about gold standard, I can't help but think about Mr. Ron, Mr. Paul's story noting that when the Roosevelt administration took us off the gold standard in '33, they sealed every safe deposit box in every financial institution in America. And before you could open it, you had to have a federal official of appropriate nature or state-designee to be with you so they could make sure you didn't have any gold coins, gold bars, or gold certificates in those safe deposit boxes. So I think the ranking member brings up some interesting observations. Even gold wasn't safe in '33. Yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Long reach of government, so thank you. David Scott, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there is a good amount of very serious and legitimate concern about coins that are being offered. I mean, I'm not sure we realize it, but there are over 1,600 coins currently and growing every day. And we've got to look closely and watch how these coins are being used, and if it is appropriate for them to be regulated, to make sure that they're not being used improperly. I'm not sure that the panelists, or the audience, or those who may be watching via television, know, but I find it very concerning that in the indictment of the 12 Russian hackers that hacked the DNC's servers, did you know that they included in those charges within the indictment was the fact that the Russian hackers used principally Bitcoin when purchasing the servers, when registering the domains, and otherwise making payments in furtherance of illegal hacking activity on the United States elections? So what I'm saying is that with every new tool, our technology's moving fast, it's going at a rapid rate, and we've got to grab hold on what we're doing to make sure that we do everything we can to ensure that these new coins are not being used illegally or for illicit activities, like when the Russians attacked our election system. Now, I also have read in some news coverage of studies, studies that are out there, that think that not all of these ICOs are a positive thing. There's a lot of debate on that. And I think our ranking member, Mr. Peterson, expressed it best of all. For example, a recent sadist group study found that over 80% of initial coin offerings are scams. In fact, they broke ICOs into six groups: scam ICOs, failed ICOs, gone-dead ICOs, dwindling ICOs, promising ICOs, and then successful ICOs. And on the basis of these above-six classifications, they wrote that they found that approximately 81% of our ICOs were scams. 6% were failed, 5% had gone dead, and 8% went on to trade on the exchange. So, so I want to ask the panel, with this evidence, does this seem right to you? Is 80% high? Are the risks being blown out of proportion for these studies? Well, let's start with Mr. Gorfine. You mentioned in your testimony that Lab CFTC published in its first Fndec primer on virtual currency late last year. What more can we do to protect investors? And I want to get each of you in my last minute here to say yes or no. Are we in trouble? Is this thing serving us? Are we serving it?
I'll try to be brief, and we share your concern. And you mentioned the Lab CFTC primer, which we published in October of last year. And the way the primer is structured is that it concludes with a discussion of risks and challenges that we believe market participants need to be aware of. Just this week, on Monday, and I would encourage, you know, the public that's viewing this today, to take a look at a customer advisory that we published through our Office of Customer Education and Outreach, where we're tackling exactly this issue, which is that it's a very speculative, risky space for especially retail participants to be participating. And we encourage them to really do their research and ask themselves important questions about the value of a lot of the different types of offerings that are out there. It's an area that we think education is a key component. I'll also add that from an enforcement perspective, the CFTC, as well as a lot of other agencies, are looking to target bad actors that are trying to take advantage of a lot of the enthusiasm around this space. So the combination of education, enforcement, and then proactive engagement, as Lab CFTC is doing, are important regulatory tools for us to deploy.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Austin Scott, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, well, we are a long way from Peanut Fields in Sycamore, Georgia. And I can't help but wonder, as somebody who, prior to getting elected to Congress, actually had a Series VII, what would a prospectus on a coin offering look like? I don't know if it would be one page, or 10,000 pages or more. But one thing that's clear to me is that you can certainly create a coin for anything. You can create a coin for any color, you could create a coin for any opposite color. So there's an infinite number of coins that can be, that could be created. I see no way to regulate every coin offering that's out there. But I would also tell you that when you turn on CNBC and they show the Dow, the S&amp;P, and the Nasdaq on one side of the screen, and on the other side of the screen is a value for Bitcoin, then certainly it's reached the level where we need to have some type of regulatory certainty in this, in this area. Most of my questions are for Mr. Gorfine. You run Lab CFTC, and you have held office hours around the country where you've met with many people in the industry. Can you tell us about the interesting concerns of the developers? Can you tell us about the interesting concerns of the developers who are working on token-based projects and how sensitive they are to the regulatory environment?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And in fact, I'm heading this afternoon up to New York to have another round of office hours with innovators. Well, we've had an incredible opportunity to go to various cities and meet with folks that are heavily involved in a lot of projects across the spectrum that you've heard about today. And, you know, it strikes me that it is a new generation that is really looking through a technology lens as to how we can transform markets, make markets more efficient and effective. But there are a lot of questions that they have, and that's the reason we have the engagement function of Lab CFTC. A lot of folks are trying to get a lay of the land and start to understand the alphabet soup of regulators in DC. So through Lab CFTC, we do try to establish some guideposts and educate as to how our framework applies. And in some situations, we'll explain, well, this is where the CFTC fits, and then there are questions that you may need to look at securities laws to understand the interplay there. But in response to a lot of common questions we were getting, that's why we published the FinTech Primer. It's our way of kind of facilitating conversation with the community to make sure we are being responsive and, where possible, providing as much clarity as we can. Other efforts of CFTC have been around things like actual delivery is a question that comes up a lot in the cryptocurrency realm. So our Division of Markets and Oversight has put out a draft interpretation that deals with actual delivery. All of these are efforts to start enhancing and providing as much clarity as we can.
Mr. Gorfine, you suggest in your testimony that the commission has an interest in this technology being used for capital markets infrastructure. Many of us on this committee, including myself, have introduced a piece of legislation, the CFTC Research Modernization Act. Have you had a chance to review that legislation? And do you think it could help the commission understand the emerging financial technologies and help us better understand how we need to regulate or, in some cases, not regulate certain areas?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, one of the things that we're really focused on doing is making sure that we're engaging with technologies and fully understanding them. So what you're raising is, you know, the ability to give the CFTC authority to research and test new technologies. I'll give one example of how that may work in this space. We talked a little bit about private and permissioned distributed ledger technologies, which could impact and improve capital markets infrastructure. There's a lot of interest from market participants who are saying there may be more efficient ways for us to do, for example, regulatory reporting in a lower-cost way for them and in a way that, for the regulator, is more consumable. If we can receive standardized data without kind of the traditional push process, that could be very valuable. What you're pointing out, Congressman, is that authority that's proposed in your legislation would allow us to actually work with a consortia of folks that are trying to create that type of infrastructure. And that way, from a CFTC perspective, we could better understand how can this technology benefit our markets? How would regulatory reporting be facilitated? And really kind of lift the hood and really understand the technology instead of having kind of the high-level conversations. So those types of authorities would be very, very helpful to us.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Sowis, Mr. Custer, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you. This has been a very enlightening hearing, and I appreciate all the wisdom. Mr. Gorfine, picking up on the CFTC regulation such as it is, do you have sufficient resources at the CFTC? Or what would you recommend that you need from Congress going forward?
Thank you. Well, I'll harness the chairman on this. Our chairman's been very vocal about the need for the CFTC to have the right resources to be able to keep pace with our markets and regulate our markets most effectively. I believe he's asked for $281 million for our budget, and a lot of those resources would be utilized, not only with bringing in economists, but also making sure we have the technologists in-house to be able to keep pace. I'm a lawyer. I know multiple, a couple layers deep of the onion when you're talking about technologies, but we really need to be able to get to the core of technology to make sure that we're ascertaining where new risks are arising. So certainly with greater resources, our agency would be able to even scale up some of those activities.
So I would just say for the record, one obvious place to look for those resources would be to get the IRS on top of how to tax the benefits and the gains that are being made, because one of the most troubling comments today is that the IRS is not on top of how to, how to capture those gains. And I think that's something that we need to look at, but it's also something on your side with some conversations with your counterparts at the IRS. I want to quickly turn to the two professors and get a sense of a very troublesome aspect of this, and if anyone else wants to comment. So Credit Suisse analysts last year identified that 4% of the addresses hold 97% of the Bitcoin in the world. And the philosophical goal of Bitcoin is to replace governmental-backed fiat currency. But if that goal is achieved, you'd have an unprecedented amount of wealth and power concentrated in the hands of a very small number of people. Is this concerning to you? And what should lawmakers be doing with, in this regard? And there's a couple of minutes left, and you can take it.
To some extent, it's not surprising because most economic, small economics ends up with some centralization. So an irony is that the technology is supposed to be a decentralized, you know, peer-to-peer.
That was why the statistics struck me, because all the commentary has been, this is all open source.
And so it's one of the natural ironies, because we all, humans, tend towards clusters and clumps and centralization.
And taking into account with the indictment that some of these addresses are in Russia with people that want to do harm to our country.
So more specifically to your question, some of that concentration is because it's the large exchanges, the crypto exchanges, like Coinbase has 20 million accounts. They may not all be active, and they hold $20 billion of crypto funds in the market. I should have said the market went up in the last day, so it's now about $290 billion. But just one exchange has a big chunk of it. So I don't know if that's.
Is that then owned by multiple parties?
Well, so it's, it's, I'll speak a little bit like an accountant, which I know the chairman can appreciate, but is that Coinbase has several accounts, but they're only there Coinbase. And then if I wanted to trade, I don't. But if I wanted to trade, then I have an account at Coinbase. These addresses would be in Coinbase's name, not in my name. So I only have a right to Coinbase. Coinbase is actually, has whatever you want to call a right on this ledger.
So the heart of my question is that not very many people end up controlling and influencing. And if the long-term goal is to cut out state-sponsored currency, that is problematic, in my view.
Yeah, I think you're right to be concerned about the centralization of power, but it, when, it's not necessarily so that a single address equates to a single legal entity in any way. Any one person can generate any number of addresses that have smaller or larger amounts, and we don't really have a proper way to be able to tie that up.
What do you think the percentage, how would you describe to the public watching today the distribution of influence?
There certainly are loci of power. But also, if you look at the movement in some of those earlier addresses or larger addresses, it's commonly accepted that about 25% of something on a network like Bitcoin have not moved or have basically been lost at this point. And so you'll see funds sitting in places and simply not moving, and the common consensus is that the private keys or the access to those wallets have simply, or those addresses have simply been, been lost.
Well, my time is up, and I'll yield back, but just to make a plea for democracy somewhere in this process, I appreciate the chairman for scheduling the hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, gentlelady goes back. Mr. Allen, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this has been very interesting. The gig economy is moving at light speed, and the rest of us are just, it's kind of dragging us along. But, but it is exciting. You know, I guess the, the problem that we're having is, from a regulatory standpoint, is, throughout the gig economy, is obviously the reason it's doing so well is because there's lots of freedom and very little regulation. But we do know that there are lots of problems. People are, you know, I mean, as far as connectivity, as far as security and that sort of thing. How do we reach a balance with this? And, you know, what we're doing is we're creating another money supply here, as I, as I see it. In other words, you're, it's global. I mean, it's a global currency. You know, I just don't know how that works, you know, where, like, we have our basis. Our dollar, I believe, kind of sets the mark for the world right now. Explain how this, how this is going to work across the world. I mean, you mentioned Afghanistan. I don't know what their currency base there is, but I'm just going to open it up. I mean, how, I don't, I can't visualize how this could possibly work.
Can I give it one, real quick shot? Is governments, sound governments like the US, I mean, if we maintain, we have to maintain our fiscal discipline and all the things we need to do.
If you can keep it, right.
Yeah, but sound governments have certain advantages, I think, because of the stability and also because we allow our currency, fiat currency, to be used for all, it's legal tender for all debts, public and private, and you can use it to pay taxes. And so there's some just natural advantages. I think that how this might play out, I could see a country that's in distress, the Venezuelas of the world, where in the future, one of these currencies will be a better thing for their public than in that distressed community.
For their individual citizens.
For the individuals, for the merchants.
Because they're not dealing through their government, they're dealing through this global currency.
Yeah, I could see that. I secondly think even in a stable economy like ours, that our Federal Reserve, with all respect, has a little bit of competition for the payment system. We Americans spend between $100 billion and $200 billion a year for our payment system. That's only a half a percent to 1% of our economy, but it's still $100 billion to $200 billion a year. And so startups and entrepreneurs have a chance to chip away at that and get inside of that. That's competition to the commercial banks and the central bank on our payment system.
Other feedback, we've got about two minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that around the Venezuela point, that there was some interesting usage of Zcash in Venezuela over the last year as a sort of bridge currency to the dollar, so that citizens that could not have traditional access to get to the dollar were using a cryptocurrency as an intermediary. Given the volatility of cryptocurrencies, you wouldn't necessarily want to stay there. But as a bridge, and a censorship-resistant bridge at that, it's somewhat important. So while censorship resistance can be seen as a double-edged sword, we might not necessarily like the way that people are doing "bad things," quote unquote, with the network. The ability to project into places where they also would prefer, and people to not be doing things, should not be underestimated.
I could see where, like, a business located in a country where the government is unstable, the business community could really benefit from this. What nation would, I mean, so then you got this competition between, you know, right now, I guess the biggest competition is between the United States and China. I mean, you know, they're, the yen seems to want to be the basis. How do you, I mean, which nation would run this thing and ultimately be responsible for it?
Well, see, that's the thing. It's actually so, it's decentralized, so no nation does, but you mentioned China. I don't know, there's been public reports, but there's a lot of people in the community that say that though China, the government has said we're clamping down, the reality, the reality is there's a lot of activity. The Bitcoin is mined, this is how it's developed. Two of the biggest mining pools, two of the three largest mining pools are in China, the third one's in Russia, and that combined is about 50% of the mining pools. But beyond that, the Bank of China is very actively engaged.
But the government is not fond of this?
Well, they're of two minds. They say publicly they're not fond of it because they don't want, their currency is not convertible, so they're worried about people running around their currency. That's the public face of it. But underneath it, they're doing a lot of work on it. The Bank of China particularly is looking at it very closely because they're worried they want to get their payment system right and they want to use it maybe.
There's also a bit of a land grab going on when it comes to enterprise distributed ledger projects, where countries like China can go into emerging economies and do essentially free work for them using their technology, which is impacting the adoption of specific protocols backed by various countries in those regions.
Okay, all right. I yield back, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Darren, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cryptocurrency, blockchain, technology, all have tremendous potential, and I'm bullish on the prospect. But we're in kind of a bizarre position here on Satoshi Nakamoto, an unknown person or people who developed Bitcoin, and this person or persons has 980,000 Bitcoins and an estimated worth between $19.4 billion to $17.9 billion. So can any of you today, and just raise your hand, verify that Mr. Satoshi Nakamoto is in fact a person or persons?
I don't believe that we've all agreed that it's a male.
All I ask, okay.
Satoshi is female.
Satoshi's female, great. So none of you can verify who founded their own Bitcoin, is my point, which puts us in a strange position, because normally we have industries and new currencies where we'd know who created it. So that puts us in a weird position. In addition, you mine to develop new currency, a process by which transactions are verified, and you add it to the public ledger, you compile recent transactions in a blocks and try solving computationally difficult puzzles, and you get a reward, either a, I guess, a transaction fee or newly released Bitcoin. Have we ever, I guess gold is the only thing that we could even parallel to where we've mined in such a way. Have we ever had a currency online like this, where you mine via transaction algorithms and solving puzzles on the internet?
This, that's, that's the novel creation of, yes, somebody we don't know who she is, Satoshi Nakamoto, or he, or collection. But that, that's the novel thing. And when the internet was created.
My time's limited, so we have an unknown person and a bizarre way of mining Bitcoin to get it together. I'm more concerned, though, about being able to avoid money laundering for terrorism, drug trafficking, human trafficking, tax evasion. So I'd love to hear from each of you in one sentence on what we could do to stop money laundering and having Bitcoin and other cryptocurrencies be the choice of terrorists, drug traffickers, and those evading taxes. We'll start from the left and go on back. One sentence, because my time's limited.
Trust FinCEN to do their job.
Yeah, rely on other law enforcement mechanisms that work around strong cryptography. We do not weaken roads and add potholes to them.
That's two sentences, but thank you. My time's limited, I apologize.
Bitcoin is actually the worst tool to money launder because every transaction is registered and fully recordable, so it's actually law enforcement's best friend.
Okay.
While the technology can be peer-to-peer, most activity takes place through a new type of intermediary where you can apply AML KYC rules.
Okay.
On top of that, rigorously require crypto exchanges to register, and you may need to pass a law to do that, but to make sure they register and that all the AML anti-money laundering and, you know, your customers being done there.
Run on sentence, but helpful. Thank you.
The alleged Russian hackers were caught because they used Bitcoin.
Thank you. I'm also concerned about two practices, spoofing and wash trading. Spoofing being flooding markets with fake orders to trick other traders into buying or selling, and wash trading, which is where cheaters trade with his or herself to give a false impression of market demand that lures others to dive in too. So can anybody give us any insight into how to stop spoofing and wash trading? And we'll start from the right to the left now.
You know, that's a tough one. I don't have a good answer.
Okay, next.
Register the exchanges and cops on the beat.
Yeah, we're a markets regulator, that's something that we're able to police for within our regulated futures and swaps markets. And so worth a look at the underlying market to ensure that the right types of regulations are in place.
And are you all doing that right now?
The CFTC does not have direct oversight authority over underlying markets.
So we would have to give you jurisdiction to help with spoofing and wash trading?
It would be something Congress would have to look at in terms of authorities.
Next, Mr. Kapoor.
Yeah, I agree. Either between the SEC or the CFTC, you'd have to grant appropriate authority. authority.
Agreed, broker-dealers need to be treated like broker-dealers.
I'd agree with that.
All right, thanks, and I yield back.
Yep, Jim, back. Mr. Fazio, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering if, for the benefit of our viewers at home across the country who are watching this hearing and are trying to understand the impact of the cryptocurrencies and what the future holds, if perhaps Ms. Balde and Mr. Cooper could tell us where you think from a five to 10-year viewpoint where this is going to be, the role that these currencies are going to have in our economy, and how might this affect average consumers? Right now, it's, the market participants are mostly very sophisticated people. Do you see this insinuating itself into the broader economy?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so we believe that this really is going to create a whole new set of infrastructure on which all kinds of new applications are built, some of which we may not even know about today. So if you think about all the benefits we've reaped from, you know, Facebook and Google and all the kind of, you know, internet properties that have been built today.
And negatives.
And negatives, too. I think what the beauty of this technology is, is it gives us a new set of platforms, and again, very critically, those platforms are not controlled or governed by centralized corporations, they're controlled and governed by a community. And so you can imagine all the utility that we have today, but where the consumer actually has ownership of data, the consumer has the ability to actually ensure that data is shared in a manner in which they want to be shared, and the consumer also can capture the economic rents from use of that data. So we think the opportunity in that respect is endless.
Sure, I would say that there's two very different sides of the spectrum. On the enterprise blockchain and distributed ledger side, we're seeing mutualization of workflows kind of come to pass, and that's a way for companies who kind of trust each other to do things in a more coordinated way that drives down operating cost. On the public side, we can see, to tag on to the gig economy statement earlier, we can see a further kind of micro-gig economy is happening, wherein if people were to have more access and control over their own data, this goes for businesses as well, we might be able to monetize that in new ways. So alternative business mechanisms to the current kind of data-hungry surveillance capitalism that we see arising from centralized companies, we might be able to challenge that kind of hegemony.
And Mr. Fearfield, you referenced personal privacy issues. How do you see that coming into play here?
Well, there are a few. The first would be if we were to follow through on the suggestion that KYC and AML, that is know your customer and anti-money laundering requirements, be imposed on many more actors in this space. The initial reaction of many people who held cryptocurrency was that they did not particularly want those data revealed, and they built products to try to keep that data from being revealed. At least as far as the major exchanges, and I've heard exchanges used a few different ways today, but here I'm talking about the way you onboard. You spend dollars, you get Bitcoin, for example. I think that giving those exchanges the requirement under the Bank Secrecy Act to have KYC and AML requirements, at the same time that they have fairly strict financial privacy requirements, was a moderately decent fit. For national security purposes, we need to know when people can make a couple million dollars disappear in one country and reappear in another, but at the same time, there is some degree of constraint over what, where that information can go once it's kept within financial institutions. I think that's a good example of a mix that seems to work, and maybe that would be a model we could spread out from.
And just generally, Mr. Gensler or Mr. Gorfine, as we look at the development of this, it does seem that there is a issue that's going to affect government, which is, right now, we know, because we have paper trail, we have electronic trails and documentation of transactions for which taxation applies, for which government oversight and reporting applies. How does government address this from the standpoint of its interest to try to make sure that taxation and other compliance issues are resolved, that currently with our existing financial transactions, we have mechanisms to have that reporting?
I think it's really about knowing all the accounts. This technology has what's called public keys and private keys, and Zcash, which Ms. Balde's involved in, is even more secret than that, but it's really knowing who owns the accounts behind that. So it's know your customer, beneficial ownership, and then trying to do that through some of these central mechanisms like crypto exchanges. It's not going to be perfect. This is going to be like a whack-a-mole, that it's going to be, you know, it's the IRS and the CFTC will work hard, and then three years from now, the technologists will have a new way to get around it.
Mr. Chairman, could Mr. Gorfine respond to that as well?
Yeah, very quickly.
Yeah, if I may, I mean, you know, one observation, too, is remember the most anonymous form of transaction is actual cash, right? People transacting cash, there's very little record of that taking place. Most virtual currencies, cryptocurrencies are pseudonymous. So there is actually the ledger, which is a fairly transparent mechanism to be able to pursue potential law enforcement as well as AML and KYC. So I just want to point that out, but it is something that needs to be figured out by government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lamoffa, five minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Analyst, sorry I missed part of this hearing here, but it might be, well, I'm a flip phone guy in a Bitcoin world anyhow, so I'll just, you know, no pretense here. But Mr. Ness, I come from the flip phone part of NorCal, as you down there in the Bay Area. Just a question I'll try and narrow down to. It was talked about earlier in the committee about crypto networks and the internet protocols on tokens, so would you touch upon what would it look like if that token is determined to be a security? Can you hit that for us?
Yeah, I think the issue really comes down to friction, and while we can get to a status of free-trading securities by registering them, even when you do get to that status, there are all sorts of ancillary friction that, in and around the transfer of a security. You need to have broker-dealers involved, and you need to have suitability requirements met, and other potential disclosure issues and so forth that are ongoing. And so when we're talking about trying to create the next generation of decentralized protocol layer kind of apps on top that are all interoperably interacting with each other and transferring value at the speed of software to deliver a service to a consumer, it may be all transparent to the consumer that this is all happening under the hood, but you can't have fundamentally the transfer of value at the speed of software if it's a security.
You're talking, I mean, with the middleman of a typical financial institution, right?
That's right.
Yeah, all right. And again, what, please touch on the importance of increasing the access to the speediness of those types of transactions. Why is that important?
Well, so, I mean, to get a little philosophical, I suppose, I mean, you know, ledger technology is fundamental to commerce, right? And double entry accounting was an amazing innovation in ledger technology that, you know, pulled Europe out of the, you know, Dark Ages. And the same thing can happen in an amazingly more robust way when we start to literally not just allow parties to trust each other through standard mechanisms of reconciliation, but when we remove the reconciliation or the need for it altogether. And that is simply a philosophical point of view, I suppose, but it goes to this issue that we're at early stages of this. We don't know where it's going to go, but speed is probably a good thing.
Could I just say, I'm an optimist. I agree with what Mr. Ness says, but maybe it's the MIT in me now. I think that the beneficial ownerships will be able to be tracked in a matter of milliseconds and nanoseconds. Not yet, it might take five years, but we'll get there. Technology is pretty neat, how it grows and helps us.
Well, it's amazing, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of looking senatorial at a Zuckerberg hearing, I'm going to yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Lamoffa. Ms. Plaskett, five minutes.
Good morning, gentlemen and gentlewoman. Thank you all for being here. Of course, this is, you know, something that we're all really learning about. I try and say that I'm woke, but, you know, that always doesn't work, and this is one area where I think that my 20-something-year-old children would find me really out of date. So I'm happy, Mr. Chair, that we're having this, because I think there, and I think you all are correct, there's a balance, right? We don't want to over-restrict something that we don't even really understand, or that's still developing, but at the same time, ensuring that that development, while it's developing, bad actors are not utilizing and gaming the system so that really terrible things can go on. One of the main things that I'm concerned about, people think of the Virgin Islands as really just being a beautiful paradise, but we have enormous amount of drug trafficking that goes through the Virgin Islands. And we also, along with other Caribbean islands, other islands more so than ours, have the ability to be used as a filter for hiding money, and particularly ill-gotten gains. And so I was wondering if anyone on the committee can really talk about how we can, or law enforcement can really act as a deterrent for the use of Bitcoins, the marriage now between Bitcoins and blockchain, to be able to really accelerate the use of these types of currencies in a manner that does not, you know, cause individuals in other places to really take advantage of this.
It's ultimately a bit of an arms race because technology is new.
I love it, we're having an arms race with electronic money, right?
We are, we are. But the arms race in this is basically against societal norms and bad actors. So technology, I mean, there's always going to be crime, and technology is just a new form of way to do it. I think one thing that the panel's all said is Bitcoin actually is more traceable than the public thinks. It's not anonymous, it's what's called pseudonymous, but we need ways to connect those public keys, which are like 24 or 32 digits that nobody, you know, to real people and real companies. And that's why I've recommended, I think, you need to have gatekeepers or gateways, gateways, to do that. The exchanges, the crypto exchanges are one set of gateways for law enforcement then to track, the way that law enforcement now uses banks to track things. So that would be one way, I would say.
I saw some others wanted to.
If I could also respond. The way we catch criminals often is through traffic analysis. Blockchains are quite good sources for traffic analysis. There are Tumblr.
Can you tell me, how does the blockchain facilitate that?
Sure. One thing to do would be to go online and simply Google blockchain. You'll find a website that will list each transaction as it comes across. And if you spend 30 seconds sort of watching every transaction in the world that happens in blockchain, and you think to yourself, if I were a police officer, I would find this flow of money around the world very interesting. We also have computer programs, though, that don't require a person to sit there, but can comb these databases, find patterns, and kick bad patterns up to somebody to take a look at it. There are ways of circumventing this. Blockchains are pseudonymous. I don't put too much stock in it because tumblers and dark wallets can essentially, you and I might agree, I'll pay your debts, you pay mine, that way your debts aren't traceable to you and my debts aren't traceable to me. That's essentially what a Tumblr does. We pay each other's debts, and so we hide where the money's coming from. But I think that with traffic analysis, standard artificial intelligence runs, combing across the database, we can do a pretty good job of kicking up where bad actors are stirring the water.
Mr. Gorfine, what do you think the role, we talk about law enforcement doing this. There's all of us here concerned with what is our role. What do you see CFTC in dealing with this as well?
Yeah, and I want to kind of step back and compliment the way I think you framed this initial set of questions, because I think, you know, it's exactly right that, when I mentioned earlier in my testimony about thinking about principles and making sure we're giving a, you can regulate based on principles, and then as you identify areas where there are particular harms to solve for, that's where more prescriptive rules might fit in. And certainly, in this area of anti-money laundering and know your customer, that's an area where you would want to make sure you're enforcing rules. But to your more specific question, you know, the CFTC has now had a lot of experience dealing with some of these markets and the technologies, but again, we're, our role is as a primary regulator of futures and swaps markets, and then we do have that enforcement authority, that's a look-back authority to police for fraud and manipulation, either in our futures and swaps markets or in the underlying market as well. But because of our experience, I think we have a lot to offer at this stage in terms of informing the discussion around this space, given our enforcement experience, the role of our division of market and oversight in regulating the actual exchanges, monitoring some of the clearing and risk issues associated with cryptocurrencies, customer education, and then lab CFTC outreach. So I think we're playing a very important role and then hopefully can help inform these efforts.
Thank you, and I yield back. I just want to make sure that the regulations that we're doing, while we give time for this to grow, we also make sure we don't end up like Facebook, where it has outpaced us in terms of being able to do damage in the general good.
Jaleesh Sathishburn, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gorfine, I'm going to go right back to you. Obviously, we've talked a lot about jurisdictional issues and how to set up the proper regulatory structure that many in the industry are asking us to do. You know, there's obviously, with many of the commodities and different products, we have a SEC portion that is regulated in many cases, and then we have the CFTC, which falls under our jurisdiction. And you get to see some of the humorous anecdotes from members of Congress here, who I'm sure had many, maybe have had similar things to say when that new thing, the internet, was taking place, and how are you ever going to buy things off of the internet? Well, Jeff Bezos has told us how, showed us very well that anyone can do that now. And as cryptocurrencies continue to grow in usage, they're going to become less and less intriguing and more and more used. I am going to get into the demographics of many of the crypto users, but I want to ask you a quick question, sir. Based on the way current law is written, it's not cut and dry whether cryptocurrency should be regulated by the SEC or the CFTC. If Congress attempts to come up with a workable definition for cryptocurrencies that are more similar to commodities, you know, call them, as we've heard, blockchain commodities, what should we be looking to guide us?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, the one thing I would say is that, and I said, mentioned this in my opening statement, that it's important that we're not hasty in terms of figuring out what the right contours are of applying, you know, securities laws and then the commodities framework. I do think that the SEC has in due course been providing additional clarity. There was recently, Mr. Hinman over at the SEC gave a well-received speech kind of outlining some of the SEC's thinking as to how they would apply the securities law framework. And some of the things that I think you've heard are factors around decentralization, you know, are there expectations of return based on meaningful work of others? I mean, these are important elements that of course are not, you know, I'm not saying that these are the only elements, but these are some of the things that you start to look at in terms of figuring out, well, when does it make sense to be applying the securities laws framework that includes things like required disclosures, it requires regulations around, you know, the offering of securities and the intermediaries involved in securities, and when does that perhaps not fit the product? So I think that this discussion's ongoing, and I think that in due course and being thoughtful, you're starting to see additional clarity and certainty coming out. But certainly, those are some of the factors that we've heard talked about a fair amount.
Thank you, Ms. Balde and Mr. Kapoor. And I'm sorry I wasn't here at the beginning of the hearings. If I mispronounced a name, forgive me. I always try to mispronounce my colleague Ted's on purpose, but not yours. Now, Ms. Balde, this is an industry that you were getting into in the infancy, and you've actually done something that we don't see a lot around here. You've come to us to actually ask for a stricter regulatory environment to stop some of the fraud and abuse that was mentioned by some of my other colleagues today. But I want to ask, for those of you who are in this business, what demographic usually utilizes Bitcoin here in the United States? What age?
It's pseudonymous, so. Based on Twitter, it's probably people in their, you know, 20s to 40s.
Millennials?
It's millennials, sure. But, you know, institutionally, there's a very different skew towards the size of transactions and the types of people that are playing and the larger dollar values.
So, and there's also, as you know, there's a developing institutional market in this city.
as well, right? So yes, I think it started certainly there, but if you look at some of the major financial institutions, there, there are institutional markets and, you know, large private equity groups that are, that are heavily transacting this as well.
Yeah, and, and to, to tag on to kind of the, the last question, but also the, the concern about regulatory framework, you know, what I was mentioning is about a, a need for clarity, more so than the, not so much the, the bright lines that we're talking about, security versus commodity, as much as more interest in safe harbors for innovators, especially because we're seeing the market adapt to this in that new disruptors are, are at an advantage versus incumbent institutions who are waiting for regulatory clarity to engage. And so in a, in a way, in absence of that, it's not, it's not necessarily that incumbents are incapable of innovating, or they don't understand the technology, but they have to take a sidelines approach because they have traditional businesses to lose.
Well, thank you, and, Mr. Chairman, my time is about ready to expire, but we want to make sure that we devise a regulatory structure that allows this industry to continue to grow, but allows to, us to address many of the law enforcement problems that have been brought up here by many of my colleagues. So can't wait to continue to work with you. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Ms. Yeho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you all having the patience to be here. This is something that's really confusing to me. My wife and I, we watched a documentary on Bitcoins, and when we got done, we were more confused, and I have not invested in any, as you asked. With that said, Mr. Gensler, in your testimony, you mentioned the recent SEC staff determination that Ether is not a security, although it might have been at its issuance. If the SEC had determined Ether was a security in 2015, what regulatory requirements would Ether be subject to today? And I've got two follow-ups. And anybody else that wants to weigh in on this?
If they had determined that way back in 2015, at the time, they would have had to give some full and fair disclosure. I think the SEC at that time would have probably said, well, it's probably not three years of financials and things like that, because it was a new startup. And this is something the SEC is grappling with even now for current initial coin offerings. What is full and fair disclosure? I think Director Hinman at the SEC said it right. It's about information asymmetry. Give an investor enough information so they can take the risk. Government shouldn't, it's not a nanny government, we're not, you know, but the investors can take their risk as long as they get enough information.
Okay. And how might security, how might such a regulatory regime affect the functionality of the Ethereum network?
I, I think that, and, and Mr. Ness raised this question earlier, there's friction right now because we don't have the beneficial ownership. Securities laws say we have to have full and fair disclosure, and we have to keep track of anybody who owns the security. It's that second one that's the friction Mr. Ness mentioned. I'm an optimist, I think technology can solve for this. It's not going to be in 2018. So it would slow down some of these token economies, but I believe that it's important to track beneficial ownership for all the reasons about illicit activity and taxing and.
I agree with that. Anybody else?
At, at the risk of confusing you more about Ethereum.
Well, I was going to say that name, Ethereum, is apropos, because it's just out there.
And the Ether, yeah.
It's like, where is it?
Yeah, so whereas some systems like Bitcoin were initially meant for peer-to-peer value transfer, transfer, the Ethereum network does what's called, well, it's kind of more like a distributed world computer in a way. Don't think about it too much. But what you can do is you can use the native token of the system, this Ether, which may or may not have been a security at issuance, as you mentioned, to pay for what's called gas in that network. And that gas is used to buy computational cycles on a shared computer. So if something like gas ends up looking a lot like a security, it, that's generating P and L, just as you're running a, a general computer, it would be incredibly cumbersome, if not impossible, for normal humans to figure out what their, their balance sheet should look like. So we need to be, be careful in not just applying a, you know, one-size-fits-all solution on that.
Well, I think the important thing is, you know, we don't want to stifle the, the imagination, the entrepreneurial ship, the development of this, but yet we want to have the safeguards in place, whether it's CFTC or the SEC. We just want to make sure that when people get involved in it, that their monies or their investment are protected. You were going to add something?
I was going to make a rough analogy. Because these are databases, it's like the database in your computer, and applying securities regulation to these databases would have the same impact as having the SEC regulate your computer at, at the internal level, which is, it's just simply going to gum up the works.
Right. Yeah, we don't want that. I mean, but we want the safeguards there. My other question is, I sit on Foreign Affairs, and we deal a lot with North Korea and the sanctions and all that, and we see countries changing companies, funneling money, breaking sanctions or skirting sanctions, and a lot of it we see as being done over electronic currency like this. What are the safeguards that you guys can help us with on that, so that we can follow it? You know, when that's cash transfers, it's easier to track that. We can block and sanction those banks or those entities, but when they're transferring things like this, or any other nefarious activity, drug deals and things like that, what are the safeguards that you guys can put in place that we know we can follow that stuff?
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but the, the, the idea behind these networks is all the transactions are in fact traceable and immutable. And so, in fact, in most cases, as you've seen, for example, in the recent Russian, you know, hacking investigation, they really create a trail and a presence that actually really is a data mine for in many respects law enforcement. So I think there's, I think there's actually quite, I think, if you fast forward a few years, I think this will look in many respects like GPS and cell phones have become for law enforcement as well, which is it really creates an immutable record that would be the benefit.
I appreciate your time. I'm out of my time, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'll thank the panel. Mr. Gorfin, I think you may have to slip out to catch a plane, but I'd like to give each of you probably no more than a minute to kind of any closing comments. Think you wish you'd have said during your opening, or, or a question that didn't get answered, to sort of, it'd be helpful for the, for the record to have it. So we'll start, Mr. Fairfield. Any, any closing comment quickly?
Only that I think it's a wonderful idea to begin with these kinds of conversations, because it is here that we're able to look at the different communities that are using the technology in different ways, and perhaps craft legislation or other rules that will permit us to not only capture the bad guys, not only get them cleaned out of the system, but to leave intact what is good behind.
Sure, thank you for, for having me. I would say that it's certainly important that we're having these conversations and moving towards some right-sized frameworks. At the same time, I think, and possibly this is just our general American sensibility, we're focusing on the private sector kind of business, how does this look like a business? How does this look like a, a financial system angle? Whereas there's a whole other conversation to be had about how, what does this look like if it becomes systemic infrastructure similar to the internet, and what does that mean globally? So at, at the same time, it's, it should not be an either-or conversation. We need to be thinking about how, rather than just defensively we regulate, how we can proactively make sure that we are frontline innovators in the way that we were for the internet as well globally.
Yeah, I just want to echo a little bit, Mr. Yeho, what you said, which is, to be very clear, I, I speak myself, none of us is suggesting here that there shouldn't be appropriate regulation in this market. I think the, there is actually a very good framework between definitions of security laws that apply to the SEC, and then things that actually, you know, rightly so, look more like commodities. There's also FinCEN, as we've talked about, right, in terms of KYC and AML. So there is a, there is quite a patchwork out there, and I think, you know, for, certainly in our business where we sit, a lot of what we're seeking is, quite frankly, just regulatory clarity, so that we ensure that companies who are good actors actually understand what the rules of the road are, and we fully support obviously the activities that the SEC and CFTC and others are doing, to make sure that the bad actors are, are rooted out of the system.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank the committee for taking an interest in this area and allowing us and the CFTC to help inform and support the effort to strike the right balance. It's a, it's a promising and very new area of innovation that, you know, as I said earlier, we don't know where a lot of these different threads will lead, but it's important for us to be vigilant and make sure that we're targeting kind of bad actors and making sure there are appropriate guardrails in place, and that we have an efficient, effective regulatory framework in place, and look forward to helping support that effort.
First, it's just so good to be with you, Chair, in this committee again, after five years. Two, I think promoting innovation and promoting competition means also bringing this inside the public policy sphere. I don't think they compete, I think it's together. I think that if you recall as this committee, that there's the issuer-based crypto, which is kind of the SEC and these ICOs, there's derivative crypto, which the CFTC has, but it's going to have some challenges, and then there's the whole cash commodity crypto, which is 70% of this world. That's where I think Congress has a role, a real role, and, and to think about, is there more authorities? I say incumbents versus startups. Startups feel that they can beg for forgiveness after they sort of mess up with the law enforcement. Incumbents feel they've got to ask for permission. And so right now, there's an imbalance right now, where incumbents aren't in this space and startups are, and you might want to address that. MIT and I are available anytime if you need any help on any of this. Thank you.
I guess I'll echo that. You know, I think probably Uber taught us all that, for better or for worse, if you build something that is incredibly popular, the laws will change to conform to, to that new technology. Technology is moving at a very, very fast pace. We've, we've heard today about some of the pitfalls of, of these new technologies that get out ahead of the legislators. And so I want to compliment you guys for, for being on top of this. And I think the SEC as well has been, you know, incredibly, you know, on top of it and, and working closely with us and open to dialogue. And that, and that's what I think is really needed, is a, is a kind of free flow of information and communication between those of us who are sort of on the front lines dealing with the, the day-to-day fact patterns, and, and you guys who need to think about the actual policymaking aspects.
Well, thank you. It's been a terrific couple hours. It's well-spent for us. I hope you consider it the same. Clearly elucidated some issues, not only just with the regulation of these issues, but also the tangential impact of taxable transactions being captured in a way that, that folks can comply with their tax code and, and the revenues there, the law enforcement piece. Ms. Balde, I think you may be involved with a group that's trying to find a way to create a currency that is not synonymous but would be anonymous. That's perfectly within, that's what these markets, that's what innovators do, is they see something that, that needs to get changed, and they'll do that. And so that just speaks to how dynamic the process is. So as long as the stupid criminals keep using Bitcoin, we'll be great, but then the smart ones will pivot to, to something that allows them to hide better behind that. So it's been a terrific eye-opening session, and will not be the last, because our folks at the CFTC, who are our partners in making this happen, and their partners at the SEC really want to do the same thing, and that is regulate where it needs to and, and give the certainty so that the incumbents don't have to worry about, you know, asking for permission while the innovators are asking for forgiveness. That's an unlevel playing field, and we also want this action going on within the United States. So thank you all very much. Under the rules of the committee, it's at the record of today's hearing, where we remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Committee of Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.